I don't think anybody else. That would be helpful, wouldn't it? Winnie Roast in the sixth word?
Or you get something else. So you don't want it.
I can just hear you. Spend a lot of just property on the 40 and corridor.
She's got it.
Doctors aren't in there saying that. Thanks. Glad Joe started.
She said she was being, I don't know what's going on. She should.
I wonder if that's counted if I'm charged on account of concerts. If they told me that.
Those are three wives with middle back. Sitting in the middle. Steve Moon. Archie Farini. Roger Parsons.
Please rise and pledge your allegiance to the Constitution.
The Constitution is so divine, the United States of America. Your delivery of public force of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord God.
Lord, bestow your blessings and grace upon us. Guide us to prosperity and growth. Protect our city and help all of us to be responsible and caring. Amen.
Clerk call the roll.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
City Attorney David Hawthorne.
Here.
Our President, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Are there any additions or amendments to the agenda? Okay. First item?
Resolved, the minutes of the council meeting held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2002 are hereby approved as per task.
Motion? I'm moving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item?
Resuming the common council held on Tuesday, July 9th, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on July 23rd at 7:00 PM in these council chambers relative to a proposed local law amending Chapter 181 of the Fulton City Code as it's related to the building permit fees. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Is there anyone in the audience that cares to speak on this issue? Anyone on the council care to speak on this?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to say a few words to Steve. Why this came forward, he came out of planning, come out of planning and development committee as well as legislation committee. It's an item that was deleted back a few years ago where the single-family and two-family properties were exempt from getting a permit fee.
From paying the permit fee, not from getting the permit.
Of paying a permit fee. Whereas three-family and up had to still pay. Two issues with that. Most other municipalities have the permit fee for any size dwelling. Secondly, after talking to the city assessor, the, she's working with the state on a software program that's provided by the state where she updates all of the property values yearly to our benefit. We get paid $20,000, five out of the property for that. If that gets out of whack, and the state finds it gets out of whack, we could lose that money. So while it may have seemed like a good idea on the surface to save people a few bucks, which isn't that much for a permit, what is it, 30 bucks, council?
Twenty.
Twenty bucks? I think we stand to lose a lot more if we get out of whack with our appraisal. So that's why I came forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
I think that we said it initially when we initiated this legislation that we were going to relook at it as to whether it was effective or not. I think it's hard to determine whether the legislation did what we wanted to do. But at the same time, I think one or two things happen when you don't charge for something. Sometimes people don't feel that it's necessary to come in and get a permit. So that would take care of that. And of course, on the other side is the revenue that we would generate from charging the fees again. And I had the city clerk look this up some time ago, and it's probably between 10 and 15,000 that we would gain an extra revenue. So I think it's something that we certainly want to look at and support.
Anyone else care to speak on this? Very none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law amending Chapter 181 of the Fulton City Code as it pertains to building permit fees is hereby adopted in its entirety.
Motion?
I move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion is carried. Next item?
Resuming the council held on July 9th, clerk was authorized to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting in the council chambers relative to proposed local law amending Chapter 115 of the Fulton City Code entitled Peddling and Soliciting. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Sir, anyone cares to speak on this issue?
I'd like to ask a few questions, one of them.
For the record, please state your name and address, please.
Frederick Stephen Martin, 39 Hallstead Drive, Fulton. I would like to know the contents of the proposed legislation that you're talking about. I don't have a copy of it, so. Okay, according to Section 11, 115-8, beginning calendar year 2003, there shall be only one permit issued at a time for peddling or soliciting any food items at the area known as Bullhead Point. What does that mean? One permit per day issued, one permit for the whole year for one person down there for what?
Well, the way it's drafted, it means per, at any one time. We didn't really get into that because our permit system is set up with annual, weekly, monthly, and daily permits, and it would have just been absolutely impossible to try to say, well, you can have one person there on a daily and one on a weekly and one on a monthly, I mean, how would you do that? So it was put this way, there are some, there is some discretion in our law, there's also a provision in the soliciting law whereby the police chief can promulgate rules to carry out the intent of the law. And I think if that becomes problematic, he and I discussed this, if that becomes problematic, I think that might be the best way to solve it. Frankly, this was more intended to deal with the annual or the seasonal type permit system, permit applications, but in one, and you know, it is a good point, right? One thing I point out to the police chief, if somebody applied for a seasonal and at the same time somebody else applied for a monthly, and the monthly was to get it, then after the month is over and they leave, the seasonal might not come back, or the annual person, you know, the person wanting an annual. So that could be problematic, but as I said, that's probably, it's probably something that's going to have to be worked, evolved over time as to the best way to deal with it, because it's just.
You tell me there's discretion that can be applied, but does it spell it out here? I haven't gone down through the list yet.
I'm not saying there's discretion, if two people show up at once and ask for a permit, there's no discretion. If both permit applications are deemed valid, then it would be by a lottery system or by lot as to who gets it, even if, I suppose technically, even if one was for a week and one was for a season. But as I say, in the, in the Chapter 115 itself that already exists, there is a section that allows the police chief to promulgate some rules to carry out the intent of the chapter. And as long as he, in any, in any scenario such as that where the person administering a chapter has that discretion, as long as they don't override the original legislation, they can promulgate rules that'll do that. So I, I'm hopeful there won't be any problems, but if there are, and they can't be addressed in that fashion, then it would come back to this body eventually to.
My wife has been over there at Bullhead Point with a hot dog truck for 17 years. Do you like foresee a problem with her being there for 18 years?
Possibly. And we can't, we could not draft a law that says that that particular, that that particular permit, because it's on an annual basis now, we can't say that she isn't indefinite forever and ever. And part of this arises from, as I'm sure you're aware, a contractual obligation on our part to look at the number of permits that are for food vendors at Bullhead Point.
How many permits have been issued over there in the last 17 years?
Probably, probably just 17, I would imagine, I don't know for sure.
I mean, per year?
Per year, probably one per year.
Okay. So what is the problem, man?
The problem is.
Coming up with this legislation for Bullhead Point.
Because the city signed a contract with the vendors at the tourism center, obligating the city to make reasonable efforts to look into this issue, because part of the, well, part of their, the intent when they signed the contract was that they not have to compete with a lot of other people over there. There wasn't an intent that they don't compete with anybody that was discussed, but I, it was made clear by the alderman that they would not agree to totally deny anybody else access there.
When this whole thing came, Bullhead Point came about 10, 12 years ago, for pavilion, buildings, pier, and so on, it was on the blueprint and in the paperwork that there would be vendors, not a vendor, but vendors. And this will go against what the city has received. Hundreds of thousands of dollars for, for putting this in over there. Now the city is now getting into a position of being in the food business through this interpretive center, which has now become a sit-down restaurant. It was originally advertised as a concession stand.
But what does that, I don't understand what that has to do with this proposed law.
Very simple. It looks to me like you're trying to eliminate other people from going in there, other than one vendor. Now somebody's going to have to be right here, January the first, to put their name down to get a permit, because the way I'm listening to you, it's going to have to be on a lottery, if there's more than one.
And that's, that's the way this law was drafted. You're here for the hearing, and you certainly have a right to give your input, and the aldermen can do what they want after the hearing as far as changing it or sending it back for, to be relooked at. But the basis for this particular clause was contractual obligation to the vendors.
I got a copy of the contract. I've read it. And it said the city shall make reasonable efforts.
Correct.
Doesn't say you have to, it says you make reasonable efforts.
And 85 lawyers could, could come up with 85 different answers as to what reasonable efforts mean.
Sure.
And we've looked at this every meeting this year in the legislative committee, and when it came time to put some language, proposed changes on the peddling and soliciting law out here, because there are other things that were requested changed, some, a lot of housekeeping ministerial things to do with times and things like that, we said, let's put something in there now, since we're going to have a hearing anyway. And that's, that's why, the other reason why this is here, that's why this is here now.
To me, it appears that this is a blatant use of legislation for protectionism for the person that's in that building over there now.
Well, as I said, it's contractual obligation. We've had written correspondence from the people that are in that building inquiring as to when are we going to follow the contract, and that's another reason why it's on today. I don't know what else to say to answer you.
Fred, I think over the span of the 17 years, we have had other vendors in there, huh? Correct?
Yeah, we have.
No, you've had vendors in there.
Yeah.
You've had another one in there in approximately seven or eight years. And the ones that have been there before would only last two or three months, and then they were.
Right.
Right.
If that's the case, then what gives you reason to believe that next year there's going to be 50 people that come to apply for a permit? If that's been the case for the last 12 years, that you're the only one, then wouldn't it be reasonably safe to guess that you're going to be the only person next year, and the year after, and the year after?
Well, now you're making it a case of racing down here, January the first, to get a, or the second, really, to get a permit.
Well, if nobody else is going to come, then you can come in April.
How do you know?
I don't.
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows.
Does this mean there's only going to be two permits issued over there?
The way this is worded is there would only be two for the rest of this year, because we've already accepted two. And starting, beginning in next year, there would only be one for any year.
In addition to the building?
Right, well, that's what I was asking.
In addition to the building.
If the guy that's got to rent the building over there applies, he's got to get a permit too, doesn't he? By, year by year?
No.
No, this is in addition to the building.
He's in there, he's, this is for, you know, he doesn't.
For five years.
This is, this is peddling and soliciting.
This is for outside sales or mobile sales, I guess is what.
Yeah, this is the number of vendors outside the building.
Is there a certain cutoff time for applying for a permit? In other words, Fred's talking about coming in the day, January 2nd, but it really doesn't make any difference what time he comes in, because if he's got a permit, and depending on whether we have more than one permit, then it would be a lottery system, is that right?
Yeah, but no, it's a good point, because he usually comes in, I think, April 1st, right? Now, you usually come April 1st, or do you come in January?
First part of April, to make sure everything goes through, and then we open up the last Monday of April.
And you get what's called a seasonal permit?
You get a five-month.
No, just for five months. As I said, it's problematic, yes, and maybe it needs to be relooked at, I don't know. And I did discuss it with the police chief, and he and I were kind of at wits' end, I mean, how do you do this? I mean, do you say only one seasonal permit, and only one daily, and only one weekly? Or do you say only one seasonal, and then have some, you know, do you have 10 dailies come in the next day and have 10 other people there just for a day? I mean, I, maybe, I don't know, I mean, it's.
This can also be problematic on my wife's part. She's been there 17 years, and all of a sudden, somebody else wants it, and you have it?
Well, to play devil's advocate, Fred, does that mean she has a right to be there every year?
She pays the money.
But what if?
The fee is paid.
I mean, forget for a second the contractual obligation this group has, what if, what if because things are looking nice over there, next year we have 20 people that want to vend food over there, and there's nowhere to park because there's all these carts over there?
I would welcome.
Oh, I think you would, I would too, but don't you think that this body has a right under public safety reasons to say, well, wait a minute, we got to limit this?
I don't know what the limit is, and right now, there's only been one there for this.
I don't know either. I don't, I don't know either, I don't know either. I just.
To me, it looks like it's getting blown out of proportion, you're looking way ahead at the game.
I'm simply.
I just want to know what kind of protection my wife is going to have.
I'm simply following the contract that this, that this council signed as far as trying to put together some language that's going to take care of our contractual obligation.
Actually, Fred, there is no protection, basically, with the way this is written.
And so you, John, will rectify it?
Well, I don't, personally, I, personally, I don't agree with it.
Well, let me ask you a question, though, what kind of protection, for lack of a better word, are you looking for? Are you looking for the God-given right to park down at Bullhead Point? I don't think anybody has that, and that's what you're looking for, you're looking for a guarantee that you can go there every year. Right? Is that basically what you're talking about?
Okay. Now we're going to, more than two comes in, now we have to have a lottery.
And if, if you're guaranteed the God-given right to be there, what about, you know, Mr. Freeman's in the back of the room, what if he wants to go down there instead?
He's got a permit. We're the best of friends, and I welcome being alongside for that truck of ours any year.
And I go out and buy a hot dog cart, and I go down there, and I start selling hot dogs, and so does Ron, and there's only so many mouths to go around to eat hot dogs.
It's the saturation point, I agree with you.
Well, I guess we feel that when this was written, we felt that that number was two, the building plus one, as the saturation point. Is that, is that fair to say?
At the same time when it was drafted, and it was, I believe it was, if you guys all remember the discussions and negotiations of that contract, it was, in fact, in fact, it was frankly, it was believed by us that we were going to receive a proposal that required us to limit totally one, and it didn't, but it required us to make reasonable efforts, as you're aware, and that's, this is what we're doing here.
I know the contract says, make a reasonable effort for anybody except, keep anybody out of there, except the existing vendor, but it's not, say, Shannon's Hot Dogs. That's in the contract.
Right.
Says existing vendor, but not by name.
Right. Well, it's my opinion that legally, we could not grandfather a particular business, if it was a permit, it was an indefinite basis, it'd be a different story, but because it's renewable each year, I don't believe we can grandfather.
Isn't the other reason because the permit is a citywide permit? It's a mobile permit?
That's true also, that's true also.
And there's no location that's on the permit application?
Technically, it is a citywide permit, yeah.
So in theory, the city could give out 20 permits, but the only restriction here is that we're restricting the number at Bullhead Point, we could still give out 20 permits.
Yes.
Just one at that location. Right?
Yes.
I'm not sure legally if we can prevent veterans from selling their wares down there either.
Veterans are not included in this, John, because they are exempt from the permitting law if they, if they comply with the correct sections of, I think it's a general business law.
Right.
They have to register with the county of Oswego, once they've done that, they are not subject to our peddling and soliciting law, so there could be 30 of them there selling.
Right. That's right. We have no control over that.
And also, isn't, like, fresh, yeah.
Farmers, farmers are exempt too, under Ag and Markets?
Jay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this? Please come forward.
I'm Sandy Freeman. I currently have right to reside at 29 Bacon Street. My wife and I own Sweet Inspirations, and we also have a permit to vend at Bullhead Point. We have not done so at this particular point. I do find it very interesting, however, that all of a sudden, you're going to try to limit this. I think based on the fiasco that you have over at Bullhead Point and the contract that every member of you signed and approved, is basically a travesty. I think now to try to have one business monopolize an area like that and not allow previous vendors who have been there, or a previous vendor who has been there, probably subject to legal action. I don't think it's the council's right to protect one certain individual operation over anyone else. And I will be there this weekend.
Thank you.
I am Sharon Martin, I am currently the owner with my husband of Shannon's Hot Dogs. For the last 17 years, I have contributed many thousands of dollars to the sales tax which comes back to the city. I am currently paying more rent than the other vendor at Bullhead Point. Up to this year, I paid $750 for the season. If the, it was changed this year to $100 a month, which I pay, which I'm there five months, so that's $500, plus I pay my own electricity. The other place, their electricity is included in the rent for, I believe it's $800 and some odd dollars for the entire year. Where is the fairness? I'm giving.
The amount isn't $850 for the entire year, it's $8500 for the year.
Excuse me, I said it wrong, I'm sorry, Mayor. Where is the fairness here? There is none. You people signed a contract with him, which was fine, I was offered that, and when I talked to who was John Crook and Barry Ostrander in John Crook's office, the first question I asked was, how much is the rent going to be? And the answer was, we haven't decided. How can you rent anything if you don't know what you're going to charge? Then it had come back to me, well, you could have rented it, I could get no figures from anybody.
That was in the.
We did an RFP.
That was in the bid process, you know, we put it out to see who was going to pay the most in rent, and the city would accept the offer from the person that was going to pay the most.
At the time when they talked to me, it had not been put out on any bid. I went down to City Hall to apply for my license, I don't know if you remember, Joe, you were there when I was in the office getting my permit, and Barry Ostrander came in and said, we would like to talk to you upstairs. So we went upstairs to John Crook's office, and they said, we would like to see you take over the building. My first question, how much rent? My first question, how much rent? We don't know. Well, I can't commit to something, we don't know what's going to be included in the rent. I don't know. Every question I answered, the question, the answer I got was, I don't know. I said, I never saw it advertised in the paper. They said it had been advertised in the Fulton Patriot only. If you people wanted to get more rent, why wasn't it included in the Pal Times, the Syracuse paper, the Valley News?
I know it was in the Valley News, because I saw it there.
Yeah, it was in the Valley News.
I didn't see it in there myself. I'm just saying, now after 17 years, you people are making up new laws to kick me out, to protect this other person, and the fact that I have contributed money to the city all these years counts for nothing. Something isn't right here, and I hope someone could explain it to me. Thank you.
Sharon, I don't think the intent of, of the law is to necessarily get anybody out, and it's not intended to provide preferential treatment to anyone else either. We just felt like there should be some kind of regulation that would control the amount of vendors over there. And, you know, and I don't know whether the council feels like this is ready or not. Certainly, you know, that you've certainly made a contribution over the last 17 years, and we're certainly aware of that, and it's a concern, but I think there's, there is a need to do something so we have some kind of consideration for the amount of vendors that we should have over there.
The only thing I was wondering is, I don't remember specifically talking about one vendor. I don't, I'm not quite sure that that's the magic number, because it's, I mean, what if we get one vendor for a day, and that's it for the year? Or if somebody goes over there for a week, and then, and then is out of there, can somebody else come in and ask? Is it one at a time, or is it one for the year? A one-time thing, or...
I think the way this is drafted, Ron, it would be one at a time, and the time would be defined by whatever the request is. If they say, I want one for a month, and they get it, then that's it for the month. And then if the next person to get it is for a day, then they get it. If the next person's for five months, they get it. But, yeah, it's problematic, I understand that. You've got to start somewhere, and this is what the process is about, this is why you have hearings to get input, is to, maybe this won't work this way.
Is it specific to what kind of food?
No.
Because, okay, because, well, I mean, some people like hamburgers, some people like hot dogs, you know? I remember when Shannon went in over there. I was mayor at the time, and I think your place was there, but you weren't running it. He was upset about it, because Shannon didn't pay taxes, because she had a truck, and the guy across the road was upset about it. He lived in Jimmy McNamara's ward, he ran the A-frame, and he didn't feel it was right, because he paid property taxes, and they did. And we gave him a permit to, to put a stand over there, and he lasted about three weeks, and outpriced himself, and went out of business.
Speaking of property taxes, Bullhead Point, restaurant there pays no property taxes.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I think originally what happened, and I guess we're all do things that we probably regret, and there's probably not anybody on this council, if they, I don't know how to say a lot of offending anybody, are smart, probably wish we could go back and not lease that out.
I'd like to go back and have you reconsider redoing the lease.
Well, I don't know how we can do that, I'm not a lawyer, we're into it, and no matter what we got out of it, it probably isn't worth the grief that we've been through, and we're going to go through over it. I just think that we ought to reconsider about how many we let in over there. I understand we make a reasonable effort, but I don't think a reasonable effort is making sure that no one's there. I don't think that's reasonable. And I think a reasonable effort, actually, what we're doing is making a reasonable effort to make sure there's no competition.
That's what you're doing.
Well, I mean, that's what that contract implies. And I think that no matter what you do, competition's the best thing. I don't think it will hurt that bit.
No problem with competition, so back to no property taxes today, and that's the rent number, that the city is actually subsidizing, you look through all your correct figures, is actually subsidizing the cost of the operators.
Well, I don't agree, I don't agree with that, because we looked at the figures, and it's nowhere near what's been publicized and speculated, but I will tell you this. When, I was the one solely at the time that decided to let Shannon go in there, and I heard all the arguments about property taxes and the competition with other businesses, and I think they made some sense if I was one of the other businesses. But the thing that I looked at, is I was with most of the people in this town, ours, working people, and it afforded me a chance to go somewhere and get a hot dog, because when I got out of work for half an hour, I had work clothes on, I couldn't go, I didn't feel comfortable going down where you were, or down through the lock, or somewhere else. So, what it did is it, even though it affected people like you, it provided a very valuable service to people like me, one of the blue collars that happens to work there. So, there's two ways of looking at it. There's always a lot of ways of looking at everything. And we did get into a contract that somewhat restricts how many people can be over there. Like it or not, we're in it, and probably we should have looked at it a lot closer. I would suggest that we consider letting more than one in there, though. Maybe somebody would come along, and, I mean, I don't think that, that that place over there is going to get made or break by hot dogs, you know what I'm saying? I don't understand that. I think we ought to consider two or three.
I'd like to connect the difference, like you said, of cost of operations.
That isn't part of this public hearing.
I'd also advise the council, the mayor, not to respond to such things, since Mr. Freeman stood here and indicated that we're going to be subject to litigation, I'd advise no response to any of his further questions.
Well, that's, that's how I feel about, and I agree that we have to do something. I agree the council agreed to try to limit the amount of, basically, limit the competitiveness of the, of the business, but I think that, I think that one's a little bit tight. Reasonable is, reasonable is, and I think we ought to consider two or three anyway.
Do you want to send back to, you looked at...
That's how I feel, but there's five other people sitting there. I mean, we're already into something that we got egg in our face over. We ought to at least try to work the best we can and try to be fair.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this issue?
Just, I'd just like to clarify something. Mr. Martin mentioned the fact that, or at least I'm looking at the proposal, that did say existing vendor, with the exception of the existing vendor, but that never went into the, the contract that we had, that we signed.
Didn't language it in there, yes?
I have a copy.
Yes.
But just because...
So, the existing vendor would be... Well, it wasn't specified, but just because the contract says that, doesn't mean that we can legally do it. I mean, I interpret that to mean, I interpret that to mean, to limit it to no more, no less than one, or no more, which way we would go.
No more. No more. Yeah, but if the contract says existing, that we're giving some kind of preference to the existing vendor, which I thought was our intention.
Well, if you guys want to pass a law that says, specifies right in there that that particular vendor can, can be there every year, I think you're going to have a real hard time.
Yeah, but isn't that what we did with the, we entered a contract to let that person that's over there right now be there for five years?
But that was because it was put out, but that was put out to bid. If you want to put out Bullhead Point to bid each year, and say, who's going to pay the most to vend their hot dogs here, then that's a different story.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the difference there legally. I mean, I don't, if this is not, if this is not comfortable, if you guys aren't comfortable with this, and I can understand it, then certainly there's nothing wrong with reworking it, there's no... I think there's enough question out there that it should probably be pulled and sent back to legislative for another look.
Yeah, I dare to.
I'll make that motion. But you have to also be aware that there are a few other items in here besides this particular clause that, that had some urgency, I thought. Chief Spahn had written to you guys a while ago, particularly the time issues, I think, because when this law was drafted, there was an oversight as to...
Oh, for how late they can sell, you mean?
Yeah, April 4th letter of Chief Spahn talked about...
We still have a public hearing going on, is that for the public or the council? We seem to be getting more involved than the public is. Is it time for us to talk after we've closed the public hearing portion of this?
No, I, I think that we can interject during a public hearing.
Okay. Excuse me for interrupting, if, Harley, you have something else you want to say?
Nope.
If I may, Mayor? I agree with Ron Woodard, I believe that some, if not all of us, have egg on our face with regards to this contract. Mr. Hawthorne has explained some of the legality here, and used some things a little differently. With regards to the phrase, with the exception of the existing vendor, obviously, there was only one vendor there, and it's Shannon. To me, it's pretty, pretty clear. If he's saying that we can't by law say that Shannon's is grandfathered, that's another issue. But perhaps it's the way we're dealing with this piece of legislation that's going to cause the problem. I'll refer back to when I was Alderman the first time, and I believe it was around '95, and I've asked Joe Teacher to see if he could find it, but the mayor, in talking to him earlier, reminded me that perhaps it was done by resolution, where when we dealt with the peddling and soliciting issue, there were two things that I remember distinctly. One was, we were going to propose something like a lottery system, and I totally disagreed with that, because I happened to have a sailboat up at Wright's Landing for several years, and they were under a lottery system, and it just didn't work, and finally got away with it. So, I kind of boo-hooed that idea. The other notion was that the city would tell vendors where they can vend. It wasn't the option of the vendor, of the city. So, if that is a resolution, Mayor, as you suggest, I would like to see that, and perhaps there's some verbiage in there that we could deal with, if not tonight, at a later time. But I do take exception with the fact, whether it's legal or not. Shannon's has been a tradition for 17 years, they're well-known out there, and I don't think anybody in this city would care to see them not be allowed to vend there. How we deal with it, we'll leave that to a legal expertise. The other issue has to do with the timeframe. Maybe this is a, either I'm not reading it right, or there's a technicality here. Under section 11512, it talks about the hours of peddling and soliciting, and it says no one should be peddling or soliciting after 8:00 p.m. and before 9:00 a.m. Well, in the contract, obviously, they're open till 10:00, Monday through Thursday, and Friday and Saturday to 11:00. So, I don't know how that legally stands up against what our ordinance is right now. But when I read out in section B, which is the, the new section, the chief has the right to determine if that time could be extended, but in the comment section, it says activities after 9:00 p.m. I'm a little confused, what happens between 8:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m.? Should it, should it say after 8:00 p.m., not 9:00 p.m.?
Looks like that is the table.
Just, that's why I bring it up. So, basically, I think we've got a couple of issues to deal with here from a legal standpoint, and if, if there is a way, well, we should find anything. And I kind of agree with Ron Woodard, I don't think we should leave it to just one. Reasonable is open to interpretation. And what about other vendors who might want to vend there, selling popcorn, or whatever? How do we address that? But the main thing is the timeframe there versus what the contract says, which allows them to determine their own hours, but I think it's in conflict with what's on the books now, and maybe in conflict with what's written here. And somehow, I think we need to rectify both those things.
Are you, so are you asking if the hours of the, the current concessionaires in the tourism center conflict with the peddling and soliciting law? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
They're not subject to it?
They're not.
Correct. They have bid, they don't have a permit to do that, they have, they're actually running a restaurant pursuant to a bid and a contract that you guys signed. They don't have to get a permit any more than Mr. Freeman does, or any more than Mr. Naylor does.
Well, it's the way I'm interpreting it, and I could be wrong, Dave, regardless of the permit, if the chief, it says either peddling or soliciting between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m., are we saying that that only, that timeframe is only subject to anyone who has or holds a permit?
This whole chapter...
Or anybody who's vending out there?
No, this whole chapter, 115, has to do with peddlers and solicitors under our permit system. So, I don't really, I mean, are you saying that every business in town has to stop at 8:00 o'clock?
No, 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 that's out there. I'm talking about that, that area of Bullhead Point that this is addressing.
This addresses anybody that's subject to peddling and soliciting permit system.
Okay.
That's, I think, Joe, that's separate of Bullhead Point.
That's fine. I think we ought to table this, or revisit it, with regards to the number and types of vendors, and somehow find a way not to exclude Shannon's.
I have an actual question. What is the actual timeframe of spars closing in the, any recreation areas in the city of Fulton, not that option? By your vote?
You asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, you know the answer. I understand you've had discussions with the police department about that, and yes, it's my understanding that that is a glitch in the law, because, well, not a glitch in law, but that is what the law says, yes, but it's unrealistic for over there, as anybody would, because we have people that want to use that place till 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock, not just, not just the food vendor.
So, are they overlooking the...
You know what, you talked to the police chief, why don't you tell me what he said, because I don't know. He would be the one to ask that, and you've already talked to him. So, I don't know what he said to you. You can tell everybody here if you'd like, I don't know what he said.
He says the time of time that it's overlooking the...
Because of what?
Because people are fishing.
So, there's your answer, I didn't, I didn't know that. That's, you know, like I said, that's, that's his province, and I know you've already talked to him about it.
Due to the information that we have, or the discussion we have had, and the information we've received, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
I'm moving.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Thompson, you had a motion you wanted to bring forward?
Yeah, we'll table this and refer it back to legislative for further review.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, and will be sent back to the legislative committee.
Yeah, no kidding.
Next item.
There's a meeting in the council on June 11th, a right-of-way request submitted by Amanda Gentry for her property located at 302 Academy Street for the purpose of widening her driveway, was referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendations. There's a meeting of the planning commission held on July 8th. Planning commission recommended the right-of-way request be approved with the following stipulations. One, the driveway width is not to exceed 24 feet. Two, the driveway must have an impervious surface with a curb, caught supervised by the commissioner of pub, Department of Public Works. Three, the sidewalk is not to be removed or paved over. Whereas the common council would agree with the recommendations by the planning commission for their meeting of July 8th, now therefore be it resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing held on August 6th at 7:00 p.m. relative to the right-of-way request submitted by Amanda Gentry.
Can I ask a question? Is, item three, the sidewalk is not to be removed or paved over, hasn't that usually been common practice to, if you dig up your driveway, you can replace where the sidewalk was with asphalt? was with asphalt?
It has been done in some places, but that doesn't necessarily-
I know that historically has been allowable. I'm just kind of curious why that restriction was put there. Do you know, Arch? Or do you care to enlighten?
I think it's correct to cover the cement, the sidewalk.
Well, the other reason why I ask is, on one hand, I know that the sidewalk is new. It just went in last year, but it only went into half of where that driveway is going to be. The other half is old sidewalk. And to throw another wrinkle into it, a guy stopped by my house today. Harry Fresh, who I guess is one of the contractors there, broke the sidewalk when they were digging on the other side of it. So are you a real stickler with that, with that catch, where they gotta have sidewalk across the driveway? I know that, and the only reason I ask is, you know, like I said, in other places in town, if somebody has a gravel driveway that they pave through, at least in my ward, ninety percent of the time, they do asphalt all the way down, including where the sidewalk goes across, because it's easier for the contractor to do it that way. Is that okay this time, or are you still going to stick with that?
Well, I can't hear your question very well. But in this particular case, what we did was we determined that we would not want the blacktop covered, the cement covered with blacktop. Okay, somebody broke a sidewalk, you say?
Yeah. I just found out about three hours ago.
I would suggest they replace it as a concrete thing.
All right. I'm not buying, so it don't matter to me. Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
No, that's it. I'll offer it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
There's a meeting the council held on Tuesday, July ninth. The city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing at this meeting of July twenty-third relative to a proposed local law amend in Chapter 177, subsection 177, dash thirteen, B. of the Fulton City Code entitled Accessory Residential Use Limitations slash Home Occupation by adding B six J to include nail salon, whereas the Fulton Planning Commission for their meeting of July eighth, two thousand and two, recommended not to approve said request, a copy of which is attached. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing over.
Is there anyone who cares to speak on this issue?
Your Honor. I would like to present you with a letter tonight that I wrote, and I'd like Joe to read it into the minutes of the meeting. And I have copies for all your aldermen here at the table tonight. Joe, if you could read that into the minutes of the meeting.
Date of July twenty-third, two thousand and two, to Honorable Michael Stafford, Mayor, John Arlenkin Jr., First Ward Alderman, regarding nail salon located at eight fourteen Worth Street. In canvassing the area residents in the neighborhood of eight fourteen Worth Street, I found there to be no opposition to the request for home occupation of a nail salon. I had conversations with the residents listed below. All residents live in the U-shaped area where salon would be located. Mr. Herbert Routh, fifty-two West Ninth Street North, Mr. John Samansky, fifty West Ninth Street North, Mr. and Mrs. David Leclerc, twenty West Ninth Street North, Mr. and Mrs. Robert Larrack, eight oh one Worth Street, Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Mahar, eight hundred Worth Street, and Mr. and Mrs. Evan Wash, forty-seven West Ninth Street North. Ms. Lori Plato of eight fourteen Worth Street has gone through this process with nothing to hide. She has been straightforward. I've always told my constituents that majority rules. With not one person from the neighborhood opposing this request, I see no reason to deny this request from Mrs. Plato.
Thank you. John, does she have a beauty salon or no?
No, no. Right now, it's the residents' home. She is in the audience here tonight. Laurie, if you'd like to get up, and maybe the council has any questions, maybe you can answer them.
I would like to just say one, a couple of things to you. Thank you for coming forward, and number one utmost is thank you for being honest. Because if you didn't bring this to Alderman and Lincoln's, you know, out there, you could open up that business, and if your neighbors weren't against, you know, if they were for it, or they're not against it, nobody would ever say anything to you. You know? And I really compliment you on that honesty. I have had constituents that have called me and said, in certain areas, that there were possibly businesses going on. And those places have been turned into code. I have never got a report on it yet. But I'm sure that there are businesses that are out there that have never come in front of this council. You're the first that came in front of this council, and I thank you for that, and I will support you.
Is honesty going to pay off or not?
I hope so. I hope so.
I hope so, too.
One question that did come up, in the nail salon business, are there chemicals-
Yes, there are.
-that are used?
Yes. There are separate state laws for that stating that to have a nail salon, you have to have a separate entrance and a separate bathroom with running water. So yes, there are chemicals involved.
And you're going to do this in your existing home?
I'm either thinking of putting up a building or putting in addition on the-
Uh, Mr. Lund.
Yeah.
A secondary-
It can't go in an accessory building.
Right. I've learned that. Yes. I've learned that through the process.
Okay, so it's still doable for you, doing it in your home?
Yes, it is. Mm-hmm.
Okay. I drove over in that area, and it doesn't appear to me to, one of the questions that came up was, was number of people that would be there at one time and increased traffic in the area. And it appears to me that you have an area for off-street parking where it would not-
Maybe a second driveway, double.
It would not create a problem-
No.
-from what it appeared to me, just driving by and looking at it. Usually, how many people would be there at one time?
Maybe two would overlap as you're finishing one, the next one comes.
To by appointment only?
Yes.
Anyone else have any further questions?
My question, just comment, but I commend Laurie as well. I know Laurie from Black Blossom many moons ago. I called Laurie and spoke to her about this, having some degree of apprehension, because I was at the Planning Commission meeting when they discussed the issue, and it was a matter of where we're at with the comprehensive plan now, and if we open it up for one, for me, or for all, or other things. The other thing I don't know, Steve, maybe you can help me out here, Mr. Lund?
What percentage of the interior of the house can be utilized?
Twenty-five.
Is it twenty-five percent?
For home occupation, it's twenty-five percent. Can't have any rest of employees there.
Right, so-
It doesn't boil the issue exactly how you determine a matter of government, you know, like that, basically, primary use has got to be rest of the company. The only other thing I can add, standing here, is that I'm not even for or against that certain prerogative, that completion, but once, you should be aware of the fact that once this is added to the list, it will not be subject to any regulatory process, anybody else can be in it. It will not be subject to any regulatory process, all of a sudden, it can be a matter of me, you should be aware of that, what's not mentioned.
How do you mean that? It's further-
My understanding is if we're adding another home occupation to the list, it will improve. Somebody coming into my office that wants to do a business, somebody gets permission to do it, what's the, what's the restrictions on twenty-five percent of non-resident employee? So if you're on that, it's of the nail salons are involved in part, it's our home occupation or not just considering.
Well, nail salons, as long as it's home occupation, somebody could get a building and have nail salon.
Now, what Steve is saying is that, once this is approved, the next person that does it next door to her isn't going to be coming here looking for permission. They're going to-
No.
-walk in and get the permit.
And from, from being at the Planning Commission meeting that reviewed this and recommended not to approve it, it wasn't against Laurie. It was opening this up citywide.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that is what it was. That's what they're, that is why they recommended against this. They were looking for something else, and it wasn't done against you, a recommendation against you whatsoever. It was just, since it goes on the list, anybody that comes in and asks for it now, if it goes on the list, there it happens. And not every neighborhood, it would work in. So that's, I just wanted to let you know, this wasn't a personal thing by any sense of imagination. Any other questions?
I've got some comments. First of all, um-
Do we need, do we need-
Laurie, you hear any word?
No, don't think so. I went looking for seven fourteen, because that's what, the information that we had gotten. And I got to the six hundreds, and I lost the seven hundreds, and it ended up, if you go across the railroad tracks, you end up in the eight hundred. So I just, I didn't go that far. I couldn't find the seven hundreds. I went home, I called Laurie, and I said, where the heck do you live? So I did go over there and, and saw the, where the neighborhood and stuff like that. But I also attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I think that the recommendation is something that we need to consider, in that there is a comprehensive plan that's going on now, and I think they're going to review many of those regulations. And I think for us to, at this time, to deal with this one particular issue, I think it's kind of jumping the gun from, from what we really want to accomplish, which is to relook at all the zoning and the charter and stuff like that, that the comprehensive plan is working on. So I think that the Planning Commission has made the proper recommendation.
Can I ask a question? Actually, it's a question for Dave. If we want to make sure that it still doesn't happen all over town, but still allow Mrs. Plato to open her shop, is there some type of, like, special use permit or variance that we could issue in exchange for-
Our code doesn't have a special use permit, and I don't believe that this would be something you could get a variance for. Would it be, Steve?
Normally, you go to the zoning board for interpretation, but you've got to have something that's reasonably close to what's on the list. If that's what your question is, if you're really not on my list, it's-
I mean, if nail salons were close to accountants, you could go to the ZBA and say, I'd like an interpretation as to whether that is close, and obviously, we all, it's not that close. But a variance would be to say, I cannot use my house as a residential anymore. I want to use it for something else. Variances aren't granted for home occupation uses, and we don't have a special use permit scenario.
Use variance would literally all person change, that property, single family, four person, three car, rarely used, it's a good, it's a good instrument to be probably used by.
Yeah.
Next salon, it may not be acceptable for an artist.
Yeah, and to follow, to follow that, I think, special use permit, the next time, the next person came in for it, it may be such a different scenario neighborhood-wise that you may not want to do it. But to answer your question, I think the only way that she could do it would be to add this to home occupation list.
Can I just, I talked to you on the phone, okay? Through the list of home occupations, we decided that it would fit under the category of artist.
I don't, I honestly don't recall saying that I, you know, committing to that, but it's arguable, certainly.
Should I draw a little question on my finger?
But that's, it, it, actually, the way the process would work is you go to that gentleman back there, Mr. Lund, and say, I want to apply for home use permit, or home, a permit to have my home occupation as an artist in the nail salon business. And then he either says yes or no. And if he says no, then you could go to the ZBA, and they have a hearing, and ask them for interpretations to whether this would fit under that. That's another way that you, that is potentially another way you could go if this doesn't work, yes.
There's nothing saying that, when the comprehensive plan is done, that it could exclude nail salons in the list on the plan, in which case she would be grandfather. Is that the case?
Try that again?
Yeah. See what I mean? If the, if the comprehensive plan comes back and says-
Well, this gets approved-
If this gets approved today, and the comprehensive plan comes back and says nail salons are not acceptable-
Well, she's grandfather.
Then she'd be grandfathered in, and then everybody's happy, right?
Yeah.
Right. That's true.
That's a good point.
Anyone else?
I just am wondering where we're going with this, and I feel a little embarrassed. I should be going to those meetings and comprehensive, but is our plan in this town not to have any home occupations or anything like that? I mean, fifty years ago, people would be starving. That's how, that's how this country was built, mainly on home occupations.
I don't think that's intended. I think the point is, if there are going to be others added, or if there's, I think what would happen, and I don't know either, is the people in the comprehensive planning committee are going to look at the home occupation list and say, what else, what specifically is very, you know, what else is very similar to all these others?
Right.
And try to do it all at once. I think that the theory is, you know, you don't want a piecemeal, because that's why-
Because that's pretty strict, I mean.
Well, I believe this was, was changed-
There's no employees and-
Used to be beauty shops were allowed. They're not allowed anymore.
Well, I know that. I know we could s-
And, you know-
But they weren't, they weren't the commercial affair as you see today. There was, there was one person, usually a-
Right.
A mother, a woman in the house, and she, and there'd be one person come get their hair done, they'd leave, another person would come. They didn't line the street with cars, and I don't think this would happen either.
No.
You know, she, she can't have any employees. She's probably going to do one set of nails, and when that's done, somebody else.
Anyone else here to speak on this?
Yes. My name's Paul Spalding. I'm Laurie's brother, and I guess my only comment is that, kind of what some of you gentlemen said, I do believe that it would be very unfair to penalize Laurie for being honest, when she could have just done this in the first place, and it could go, and nobody knows, nobody turned it into, turned it into, she totally enrolled, and you don't know where it goes. She, she could have done it, and it just seems like we're wasting a lot of time trying to figure out, I mean, she's being honest about it, why not just let her do it? I don't understand.
Well, the consequences of doing this are not just her neighborhood and citywide. That's the main problem.
I understand, but as you said, when you went by the house, and there's plenty of parking and all that, wouldn't it be on a case-by-case basis?
No.
Another area-
Not if you add this to the list. That's why what we need is legislation, to input legislation for a special use permit, where this could be done on a case-by-case basis. And that's one of the things that we're looking at under the comprehensive plan, is adding that language into our current zoning to take care of situations just like this. Unfortunately, we don't have it right now. So entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Unfortunately, I'd like to say something. We shouldn't penalize Miss Plato, because our comprehensive plan isn't in place. You know, there, like I'd said, there are many businesses that do home occupation right now. There are computer home-based businesses, you have sitting services, and there are countless, probably hundreds of people doing home-based businesses right now that we know absolutely nothing about.
Right.
And I just think that I would ask the council to support this. And I think she'll make a go of it and be very successful over there. And I would like to ask for the council's support. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
That's right, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Mike?
One, Dave, just wanted to go over this again. You're suggesting that perhaps she could possibly go after this under artist?
Not suggesting that. The question was, is this the only way to do it? And we've determined, oh, there is a possible other way, but it's a lot, it would be more cumbersome, it would take a few more months, I think. How long, she'd have to go to Steve and make the reg- How long, she'd have to go to Steve and make the request. If he denies it, then it would have to go through ZBA, which I assume would notice, and everything is another month, a month and a half, two months process. I'm not suggesting that as an alternative. I'm just, in answer to your question, I stated that that alternative does exist. You know, I can't guess as to the likelihood of success or failure, I don't know. Certainly arguable if it's under that scenario, and maybe Steve would agree with that, I don't know. But that's, I don't think he should answer that question here in his spot.
No, I'm not asking. Thank you.
Yep.
Now, we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
It's passed.
That was to close the public hearing.
Now, therefore, be resolved that the proposed local amendment in chapter 177, subsection 177-13B of Fulton City Code entitled "Accessory Residential Use Limitations/Home Occupation" by adding B6J to include nail salon is hereby adopted in its entirety.
I'd like to move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Maybe we should do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
First ward, yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
No, I just don't think we should add that to the charter. It affects the whole city. I think if we had the special use per, permit, I think then that, then I certainly would agree with that.
Fourth ward?
I have a similar problem. I called Lori to express it, and it's mainly because of the fact that it opens it up to the whole city at this time. I hope you understand. So, Lou.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Next item?
There's a meeting of the council held on Tuesday, June 25th. The city clerk was authorized, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting relative to proposed zone change requests submitted by Mr. Bob Collins for changes zone from C1 commercial to C2 commercial for his property located on the southwest corner of O'Naitis, O'Naitis and South 7th Street. There's a meeting of the Fulton Planning Commission held on June 10th, a copy of which is attached. The Fulton Planning Commission voted to recommend that the common council approve the zone change requests submitted by Mr. Collins. Mayor Stafford will now declare the hearing open.
Those wanting to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address.
I live at 615 Utica Street in Fulton. I live about a block and a half south of the Fulton, of the Fulton Builders Supply property, which this affects. I've been here before, three times before. I was opposed to it every time. I'm still opposed to it. I think it's a bad idea to put a gas station into that residential area. I've heard people argue that we have to show that the city cares about business. And I'm worried about the old business, the other businesses that are already in the neighborhood that will be affected by a zone change there. And I'm worried about what I just saw happen before with the Bullhead Point thing. It seems like every new little business that you want to see, every new dangly toy, we'll go for that, and the consequences for the surrounding area. No, we'll try that and see what happens. I'm worried about that. Before we brought these things up, you said competition can't be considered, and yet that's exactly what you considered when you did Bullhead Point. You're trying to limit competition. You kind of shot down your own argument there. The neighborhood has been opposed and is opposed, and I would say the vote on giving the mayor the right to break a tie showed that too, because our neighborhood turned out en masse to vote against that. And that was why, because we don't want a gas station in there. So I thank you again for listening to me.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
I received a letter from Pat Ives that I'd like read in the minutes of the meeting. If Joe could read the letter that was sent to me by Pat Ives.
Stated July 15th. Dear John, my position remains the same regarding the zone change from C1 to C2 on the corner of O'Naitis and South 7th Street. I am against it. Sincerely, Pat Ives.
Your honor, I also received the same letter.
I received one also.
So did I.
Also.
Also.
I didn't.
Ditto.
Anyone else care to speak on this?
George of Ace, 608 O'Naitis Street. I live in, I own the property, my wife and I, right next door to Fulton Builders Supply. Over the last, I don't know, three years that it's been closed, kids playing in there, police been there. It's a nice sort. Given the man is changing, maybe we can sell this and get a business in here. Do we, you know, need another gas station? Maybe not. But we've got to do something with the property. It's going to sit there, it's going to rot. Bank probably don't want it. City will end up foreclosing. It's going to cost taxpayers how much money to get rid of, tear it down. Then where are we going to have? Another vacant lot in the city? No? What are we going to do? Hang a sign at the city limits, no new businesses or anything wanted in the city? No. This is America. Come on, we've got to have business come into this town.
Thank you.
That's what I thought.
So anyone else?
I'm sorry, he made me think of something I meant to say, and I forgot. I talked to a person who's a real estate person down in Syracuse, and I said, "I don't just want to come in here and just say, 'Don't do it.'" What can we do with that site that would do something good with it? And she said, "Senior housing. There's federal money in it. It would create jobs. It would be a good addition to the, to the neighborhood. It wouldn't just be a vacant lot." So if you guys end up with it, think about that.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Marjorie McEwan. I live at 10 Whittaker Road. I, too, am against the change. I can certainly sympathize and understand Mr. Collins, that he would like his property more saleable or whatever, but we recently, my boyfriend and I, just put our house on the market. We have had, this has just been the last few weeks, we've had two inquiries. Both inquiries just walked away simply because they see the taxes. This is, no, thank you, we don't want it, it's too much. And so therefore, if you're going to do something for Mr. Collins to help his property be more saleable, then we'd like our taxes lowered, so our property would be more saleable.
Thank you for that.
That is one concern that I have. In the planning committed, or planning commission minute of June 10th, 2002, it says here that the marketability of the property was the reason that they needed to change from C1 to C2 to increase the marketability of the property. I'm not sure if that's a legal reason to change the zone. Is it?
Zone change request, you don't even have to tell...
Well, no, but here, here it is in the minutes of the planning commission meeting of June 10th, 2002. It says that the reason that they're requesting the zone change basically is for marketability of the property. What I'm asking you, is it legal to do that?
You can request a zone change for any reason, and I don't know if the Collins people should be held to what the planning board minutes say. I don't know if that's what they said there. I mean, I mean, I don't know if they were there to say that. Excuse me, that's the better way to put it. I don't know if that, if the planning board, I don't know if that's what their application shows, if they filed an application, I don't know. But yes, you can request a zone change for marketability purposes, certainly. You could also request a variance. I mean, they could come back after this and say, "Well, we've tried three times to get the zone changed. It won't happen. We cannot sell this property." They could present my reds of purchase, well, however many purchase offers they've had that have fallen through, because the prospective buyer would not buy it unless it was C2. They could probably get a, make a reasonable request for variance to be allowed to put gas tanks there anyway.
Do you think that we're opening up a Pandora's box by allowing this, basically, if, if these minutes are correct, and I'm assuming they are, granting this request to go to, from a C1 to a C2 for marketability purposes? Don't you think people, if they can't be selling their houses, will be lining up, wanting this to change their property, zone?
You're asking a few questions, John, but, but let me remind you of this. When you ask for a zone change, you don't have to say, "I want a zone change because of Wilson Farms," or "I want a zone change because of Burn Dairy," or "I want a zone change because of this specific business." You can say, "I just want a zone change." And you can't, this council, if you grant a zone change, you can't restrict what's going to go there, as long as it's within that list. So all you guys can do is look at the list of C1, what's allowed now, look at the list of C2, and if you feel it's not in the best interest of the city to allow what's in the C2 list, then you should vote against it. If you feel it is, then you should vote for it. Marketability just goes hand in hand with what the request is, I think. I mean, I don't think they, they're certainly not required to come here with a specific plan. But I think it's fair inference from history that the request is made because of the gas tank issue, but, or the gas pump issue, but, you know, Mr. Collins could maybe, if that's not true, he could maybe tell us that. But I, since there is no specific plan given to you as to what, what the request is made for, I suppose you could make that inference.
Is there anyone else that would care to speak on this?
I'm Tom Marbido. I own rental property at 603 and 605 Cube Street. I live at 1772 Conduit 8 Swingle. Just want to remind you, gentlemen, I filed a petition yesterday, made a public record of neighbors, a petition of protest, involved neighbors in the area, and most of them have signed it. And requirements have been met, so you shouldn't be taking that into consideration also. The neighbors do not want it there. It would devalue the property. You might not be, you might have a new building there if they put something up, but I think you just stock a lot of empty vacant homes that people couldn't sell.
Is that part of the official minutes, Dave?
Well, just for the record, the petition which was filed, which I believe, Joe, you do have?
Yes.
Did, did qualify under the city code as a protest petition, therefore, to make any change, to pass this zone change request would require five votes.
My name's Bob Collins. I live at State Route 48 in the town of Granby. I own the property that we're discussing. I asked David Hawthorne to qualify that, and that, doesn't that have to be, in order to get, need the buy votes, it would have to be property owners adjacent to the property, not just people from all over the neighborhood?
There's three criteria. Twenty percent of the property that's part of the zone change request, which obviously is your property and you didn't sign it, twenty percent of the property, 100 foot adjacent thereto, which is really all the property around you on this block, except for the property that, while it isn't, including the property behind you, which your family also owns, I believe. There were nine parcels, I believe.
No. Okay, there's not. There's six parcels that touch it, of which three of those did not sign the petition.
No, the prop, the law says 100 foot, property adjacent and 100 foot. So there are two other parcels that aren't adjacent, but that are also included, three other parcels. But with the only 11 of them, you only need three signatures, and there were more than that.
Okay, so I could dispute what you've just said, because I think you're incorrect.
Well, you certainly have a right to dispute that.
Okay. I, I think it's incorrect.
There's a thing called an Article 78. If this thing goes against...
I know. Okay, I understand that.
Okay.
But, but what you based that on was that the 20% was there, that the 20% vote was there.
I mean, there could be 1,000 signatures, but if there aren't 20% of the people within 100 feet, it is not a protest petition, but it, to me, I reviewed that, and I think it qualifies. I looked at the...
Okay, that's what I asked you, that's...
Yes. And just for the record, I looked at the...
No, I think it's important to know.
Well, I, yeah, and let me go further, say, for the record, I looked at the tax map, which I have in front of me, and the records supplied to me from the codes officer as to who was, who was notified based on this formula, as to, and of course, reviewing it in accordance with the city code. And I'll state also, so you know, that the third criteria is anybody immediately, is a word, across the street, basically is what it says, within 100 feet of the opposite street side is a third criterion. And if more than 20% of those sign, it's also qualifies, and I found that that was not met.
That wasn't met?
Because I think there's only one, one of those, I think.
Okay.
Now, there were a lot of other people that signed that did, that lived further away.
So the people who were close, like George and people across the street who were my close neighbors, and obviously, my own family property did not sign the petition.
Um, I can tell you right now that Mr. Black did. These are the people on the block.
That are within the 100 foot rule?
Yes. Mr. Black, Patricia Ives, Mr. Bonnie.
Patricia Ives? Is she a homeowner?
She's listed as, this list was given to us by the assessor, so she would be the named person who was the homeowner. Patricia Kerr is the other one. So that's four out of, out of that criteria. And then as far as the other people, the ones that are across the street, there was only Mr. Holtay.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
No problem. She, she's not included as, as being within 100 foot. She's not on the list that they gave me.
One of Ms. Joel Wang's, I just wanted to offer a couple of comments on this.
You have on O'Naitis Street, I don't think anybody's going to take this as not factual. We have a lot of mixed use on that street. You have some commercial properties on that street, you have some R2s and some R3s on that street. And I would equate what Mr. Collins is looking to do tonight in a positive vein, just for one simple reason.
Okay, sorry.
Let's take a look at what happened when the YMCA vacated that building. We had a potential for a vacant building that was, had a difficult marketability. Fortunately, Oswego County Opportunities took over that property and put up a nice new structure. Unfortunately, Oswego Opportunities does not pay taxes, but neither did the YMCA. So it was a positive, I view that for the neighborhood. If we were talking about a piece of property that did not have large commercial structures on it, if we were talking about a piece of property that had small, individual homes, then maybe I wouldn't necessarily say this is a good idea, but what we basically have there, and I don't mean any disrespect to Mr. Collins, we have a rundown piece of property there. And it's nobody's fault, these things happen. The economics of the situation force these things to happen. This is hard for me to talk about this. I've worked with Tom Marbido on committees and community events, and find him to be an upstanding gentleman. Unfortunately, there might be some economic impact against Tom if you allow for a zoning change, but that can't be the underwriting reason for this. And what you have is you have a chance to take a property that is only going to get worse. I don't see that property becoming a better situation. I don't see it getting better for the city, I don't see it getting better for the neighborhood. If by making this a C2, this property becomes marketable, I can only assume that somebody who would want to buy this property has no way of rehabbing those buildings. So consequently, I would only assume, and I'm not going to speak for anybody, that hopefully that those buildings would be torn down and something else would come into play. Maybe it would be a gas station. I don't know that for a fact. I don't know if anybody knows that for a fact. Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, but it would be something that would be a taxpaying issue, I would hope, and that would allow the city to have another potential service, and hopefully not have a huge impact on the neighborhood. And I think if you look at the potential developers, you have what we would call people who take an interest in your community, who want to develop with the neighbors, who are willing to do that, and then you have the take it or leave it's. And if it's the take it or leave it scenario, that doesn't help the community, but when the initial presentation was made by the Wilson Farms people, I felt that they were community conscious. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe.
I thought Burn Dairy was...
Anyone else care to speak on this issue?
If this did get passed, I'd like Roger Parsons to explain to the people here, he's our water and sanitation commissioner, the drainage problems and the amount of investment that somebody, the taxpayers of the city are going to have to pay, or the developers are going to have to pay. are going to have to pay, to address drainage problems.
That, that item would be addressed through a site plan review. Any, anybody that would develop that property, that would have to be addressed at site plan review by planning.
Right, but I'd like Roger Parsons to explain the problems we have down there with water. I guess that's why I asked him to be here tonight, because I wanted, I wanted people to know, and the council to be aware.
Roger?
Um, there's a recurrent rain problem, it's from, it's on Q Street between six and seven, back to Wells Street along seven, Sixth Street down to Seneca. We have plans to remediate that, but they're.
One point eight million.
Yeah. We have a plan that would address that, it's in the council. Yeah, that's.
You don't have an extra two million.
We talked about the waters, like by the water sanitation in the town council meetings.
But that is, that is with the existing property in the condition that it's in, which is considerable runoff just to the number of buildings that are on that property. There's not much area for, for seepage right now.
No, it's covered with buildings, so it has a large amount of runoff. It doesn't matter what, what that site is zoned, that problem's not going to go away until we address the drainage problem.
Okay, thank you. David.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, Dave Halsted, 70 South 11th Street. My concern now is the same as been in the past, and that's in conjunction with the petition that was filed with you people, and that the residents that signed that petition are concerned about the residential area that they live in, as is everybody in this city. It seems to be that these zone changes are cropping up from spot to spot with the fact of taking a total residential area and turning it into something other than that. I don't believe that's what the message we should be sending out to the people that are paying the bills in the city. I do think that we have a community development agency, we have a comprehensive plan being compiled. I do think that those two agencies might work together to help somebody that's in trouble with a piece of property, to find a use for that, to comply with it, and make it marketable under what it is without any further changes. I just don't think it's in the best interest of the city or neighborhoods to change residential property or commercial C one to C two, which is surrounded by residential people. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have one question for Archie Farini, who is the chairman of the planning commission. Why did the planning commission give this a thumbs up when the comprehensive plan hasn't been completed yet?
I don't see, I don't understand what your question is, Jim.
I mean, you gave a favorable recommendation from the planning commission.
I know, of course you did, yes.
Okay. The reason that you denied Ms. Plato, her favorable petition was because you said that the comprehensive plan was not completed. Well, what makes this any different?
The difference is, what she was asking for was not listed as a home occupation. If we had changed, if we had to change that, okay, and list it as a home occupation, it could be done anywhere in the city. This zone change has been requested now as a C one to a C two. There are very few things that don't fit in a C two that are allowed in a C one. Being a C two would make it more marketable. Does that answer your question, Jim?
Yeah.
It's only one specific area in that city, Wade.
Well, I, I understand the concept, but they basically denied Ms. Plato's petition because the comprehensive plan had not been completed. I'm asking the same question, why did they approve this if the comprehensive plan was not completed? That's, that's the question I ask.
It's irrelevant.
Okay. Do you want me to answer it a different way?
Yeah.
Comprehensive plan is being studied now. There may be some changes from C one to C two in these lists, which ultimately have to be approved by council area. Okay?
Okay.
In the meantime, in the meantime, this going from C one to C two would seem to be the best use of the property at this time.
Okay.
Okay?
Anyone else?
My name is Alan Mulvey. I live at 615 Utica Street. Talking about, you know, a piece of derelict property here, and I sympathize with the Collinses, you know, for the situation in having it, because I myself own property in the neighborhood, and it's quite worthless at the moment. The city just recently raised a house two doors down from me because they couldn't be sold. We've got a neighborhood already that people don't want to move into this neighborhood to live there as residents. Now, if you're going to change this neighborhood and make it so that residential people like it even less, you may end up with something a little better in a plot where Fulton Builders is, but at what expense? You're going to have a whole lot more derelict residences around it? Because we can't sell our homes? Because people don't want to live in a neighborhood like that? Think about the whole picture. Think about the community. Community isn't lots and buildings, the community is people. Think about that when you make your decision, please.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Tom Haggerty, and I currently live at 66 Old Maple Avenue, and own a business here in the city. I would just like to state that, first of all, I think we need to talk about highest and best use of this property. And the highest and best use of this property, as it has been for the last 100 years or so, I believe, has been a, a commercial property. To my knowledge, it's never been residential. The argument over whether it should be C one or C two, I think is really a minutia argument. I believe that it's an argument that is being put forward to forestall competition, or, you know, unforeseen competition, and that these things need to be decided on a case-by-case basis, as this is being done tonight. I strongly support the planning commission and their support of this petition, of this zone change. And I just want to say that for the betterment of the community, for the betterment of the tax base, and for the betterment of the taxpayers, it would behoove the city to allow this property to become more marketable, so that another business, whatever business it might be, locates there, so that they can start getting some people employed, so that they can pay some taxes, and so that they can generate some sales tax. People are concerned about what type of business might go in there? I don't know. Did we know a year ago? I think perhaps there was a good idea a year ago. But right now, what's facing the council tonight is a request simply to go from C one to C two. And this is a request that has been granted on a case-by-case basis to a number of other business owners who have made the request. Thank you.
I've had my property for sale for two years next door to the lumberyard. I've had a lot of people look at the house, and they, they love the house. But it's when you walk into the driveway, you look in the side yard, you see this, this building falling down. Now, you know, I pay taxes in the city. Now, can I have an assessor come in and assess this? And are you going to give me a break on my taxes because my house isn't worth what I'm being charged now because I have this building next door? You know, we talk about people that signed a petition, how many of those are renters in apartment houses in that area? Because it is very heavily, I mean, I know everybody who lives in the neighborhood, and I know ninety percent of the housing around there is two and three family houses. Now, is it people that live there, or yourself, you rent housing? Now, do you live there, or, you know, it kind of, to me, it looks like, I mean, I've got apartment houses here, and here, and here, and I mean, we're talking, we've got rental property there, why, what's the matter with changing this to C two? Then C one. I mean, we got apartment houses, that's a business, you know, it's a different kind of business, but we want the neighborhood a little better.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that cares to speak on this issue? And the council?
Um, yeah. Once again, the council is wrestling with a zone change request. I use two basic thought processes to make a decision. What is in the best interest of the community? What is the best use of the property? Now, I certainly understand that the neighbors have concerns, but at the same time, we also have to be concerned with everyone else in the city. That's, that's your community. And I think we all know that we need to expand our tax base, we need sales tax, because if we don't have those, that's reflected in property tax increases. So, we have to have development. We can't have our city be stagnant, our city needs to grow. There's certain limitations, and there probably is a neighborhood or neighbors around every potential development area. So, we need to get a compromise. Need to get a compromise between the neighbors and the developers. But also, the development that is going to happen is going to encourage other developers to come into our city. So, I think that's a, a big concern, and I think we need to address that. I think that this zone change, right now, we have five vacant buildings, they've been vacant for a long time. I can't see anything else going in there that immediately, somebody talked about senior housing. We had applied for senior housing on Oak Street, applied for a grant that did not come through when we applied for it. We're going to reapply for that. So, those are intangibles, those are things that can happen, we would like it to happen, just like I've talked about before. If we could pick and choose the businesses we want in our city and where they would want to go, that'd be great, but you, you don't have that advantage. Market research indicates where the development should go. It naturally has to go on the arterials, on 481, on Route Three, heavily traveled streets, because business is based on location, location, location. So, they really don't have any choice. They're not going to go in their neighborhood on a, on a side street, because they have to look at those areas where the traffic is. So, I think, and I'm, I'm asking the council to consider what we think is in the best interest of the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. Go ahead, Joe.
About a year ago, when the Collinses were, were here, and the Wilson Farms, I voted in favor, because, you know, I've always went on the agenda of voting for progress, and this city certainly does need to progress to develop and to occur. Looking at this zone change, I'm in favor of it. And somebody out in the audience, I couldn't get their name at, at first, mentioned that, well, it's going to cost the city if this property isn't taken over. Well, it's, it's, it's not going to cost the city, folks, it's going to cost the taxpayers to, and costs every one of us, because we're going to have to take those buildings and tear them down. We don't know what's there. I don't even know what the cost may even be, what we could run across in there. But if we could get, if this, this could be marketable, and if something could come in there, great, you know, it's going to help all of us out. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, just to interject for just a second, as there was another, something else I wanted to mention. I have complete faith in the planning commission and site plan review. When site plan review was put in place, it was to protect the people, it was to protect the people in the sense that developers have to come before the planning commission, they have to have their plans approved, and believe me, the planning commission acts very responsible. They are very concerned about green space, and in most cases, they can ask the developer to do something, and they have, the developer has to do it. Site plan review is a definite final step in the, in the process. And believe me, they've looked at different areas, and the improvement to that area, even though it's a business, by, by putting up berms, and by putting trees in, and shrubbery, and, and green, green space, and landscaping, they can make it look very attractive. And I don't think it's going to distract from the neighborhood, and in fact, it'll be an enhancement. Thanks.
Thank you. Alden Cavallaro.
Yes, sir. I would concur with Bob. I'm very, very supportive of the planning commission and what they've done. And yes, site plan can achieve a lot. And it's not very often that I disagree with the planning commission. But in this, in this instance, I do. We do have on the books in our code a distinction between C one and C two. C one being a neighborhood commercial district, limited commercial use, abutting any residential district, versus a C two, which is a commercial district to provide for a wide variety of business use. That's the distinction. You're in a primarily residential section down there. Am I concerned about the tax base? Absolutely. Is this going to salvage in and of itself? Absolutely not. There are options, there are things being worked on now. Whether or not they come forward remains to be seen, but there's a great possibility that will help immensely. This is not about Mr. Morbeto's competition, this is not about Mr. Collins losing perhaps some money over here, this is a community thing. He said we need to look at this from a community standpoint. The community in this instance is in that area. That's the way it's defined in the code. The other thing is, on April 3rd, the county planning board, as a result of responding to our local planning commission on an issue, also made a comment, the last paragraph, which says, "They strongly recommend the city enact all future zone changes after completion of the comprehensive plan." That's pretty strong language. The zone, the zone request that's before us tonight was made on June 10th, so that was a couple of months later. Whether we chose to ignore it, Archie said, but at this point in time, they felt that this was the best use of the property, and the planning commission went forward. That's fine. But I'm just pointing out certain factors that I think should be noted with regards to this issue. Finally, under information that was given to us, and the Tetro property regarding New York State zoning regulations, I may read a short excerpt here. Says, "Although the size of the area subject to a zone amendment is not the sole factor considered in determining whether the measure constitutes spot zoning, it appears to be the most important single factor. This conclusion is supported by numerically and by language used by the courts in their discussion of spot zone problems. There was a study done, 125 cases of spot zoning, and it was determined, describing the alleged defect in a zoning ordinance. In all of the cases, the area subject to the legislation in issue was small in comparison to the zone, which existed prior to the amendment. The largest area change was 13 acres. In short, the charge of spot zoning is made only where the area charged by the amendment is small. The study showed further that 10 cases involving single lots, seven were held to be spot zoning, while in the generality of cases in which spot zoning was alleged, the courts found spot zoning in only 12. In general, amendments which apply to single parcels or very small areas have proved quite vulnerable to attack." vulnerable to attack on the ground that they constitute spot zoning. The courts have had difficulty in discovering public benefit in zone changes primarily designated to permit a single owner to establish a gasoline station, a funeral parlor, or some other commercial use at the location where such use was excluded prior to the amendment." I'm not the judge here, I'm just reading some excerpts from the New York State zoning. And the way I view it, this property is small, and this could be construed as possibly spot zoning. I just feel that for the, for the best use of the property right now, C1 is what it's designated as, C2 allows way too many more uses, like twenty-eight, amongst which is a service station. C1, there's about thirteen possible uses. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will go on the record as saying that, uh, I supported the zone change when the last request was made. I see no reason to change my mind, I think it is in the best interest of the city to have this changed to increase the marketability, and, uh, I would, uh, I would support this. At this point, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, for now, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Have a roll call vote, your honor, for this next resolution.
Yes.
Now therefore be it resolved that the zone change request submitted by Mr. Bob Collins for change of zone from C1 commercial to C2 commercial for his property located on the southwest corner of Anita and South Seventh Street is hereby approved. First ward?
No.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
Again, my vote doesn't matter when it gets to me. I don't know.
You either need to vote or abstain.
I'll abstain this time, how's that?
It's your call.
It doesn't matter.
Sixth ward?
No.
Makes the motion for approval is defeated, your honor.
Thank you. Next item.
Can we switch orders someday? Can we start at this end?
It's going to be discussed. No, it is, we were just talking about it again.
Next item.
Yeah. Resolved that the zone change request submitted by Mr. Steve, Stephen Tetro for change of zone from R1 and R3 residential, the C1 commercial for his property located on Route Three and Holly Drive, tax map number two-three-six, point five-eight dash zero-two dash one-three, having approximate dimensions of three hundred and seventeen point eight-five by one hundred and sixty-seven point eight-seven feet, be referred to the planning commission for the recommendations to be returned to this common council for a future meeting.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mayor, can we switch numbers eight and nine around? I can do number nine now, and then go back and do number eight after that?
Okay.
Well, number eight is awarded the bid on the life insurance, and then we're going to get off of that and talk about curbs and sidewalks, and then go back to talk about insurance again.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sure. Read number nine first, please.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized, directed to receive seal bids in his office in Fulton Municipal Building, honored before July twenty-second, up to two P.M., and to be publicly open at two fifteen P.M. in the common council chambers located on the second, second floor, for the new curbs and sidewalks project, West Third Street, in accordance with specifications prepared by the Fulton Engineering Department. Whereas the clerk, with the assistance of Mr. Ryan Edick of the Engineering Department, opened said bids and read them aloud as follows. H.G. Spicer, Syracuse, New York, two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Salt Springs Pavement, Janesville, New York, one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Whereas by letter dated July twenty-second from Mr. Edick of the Fulton Engineering Department, a copy of which is attached, he has recommended the bid of Salt Springs Pavement being the lowest responsible bidder, meaning the specifications. Whereas the common council agrees with the recommendation made by Mr. Edick for his letter dated July twenty-second, now therefore be it resolved that the low bid of Salt Springs Pavement in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety da, one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, being the lowest responsible bidder, meaning the specifications, and being in the best interest of the city of Fulton, is hereby approved and awarded to Salt Springs Pavement in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mayor, I have one question, will they include add-ons in there?
Add-ons were, were included in the, uh...
Okay, because we didn't bid our sidewalks this year, so I just wondered if you could...
We're waiting for this bid to come in.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
Whereas the insurance committee of the, at their meeting of July eleventh, two thousand and two, reviewed the quotes for life insurance, whereas the low quote of Aetna for a three-year rate of twenty cents for group term in AD and D, and whereas the insurance committee recommended that the life insurance quote be awarded to Aetna in the amount of point two oh for group term in AD and D being the lowest quote, and being in the best interest of the city of Fulton. And whereas the co, common council would agree with the recommendation of the insurance committee, now therefore be it resolved that the low quote of Aetna for life and AD and D accidental death insurance for three-year rate of point two oh, being in the best interest of the city of Fulton, is hereby accepted and awarded to Aetna through financial alternatives.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
This item is a discussion item, your honor.
From the insurance committee, you want to...
Yeah, I wanted to discuss the disability. I know at the committee meeting, we had talked about going with first rehabilitation life insurance, because they were the lowest rate, it was forty-nine cents per hundred dollars of payroll. Joe, you were in there, you know, that Vern said that the current price that we're paying is seventy-one cents, and that the current provider was losing money at that price, and we had asked about, uh, you know, how long is that rate guaranteed for, and he said a year. If the prior company was losing money at seventy-one cents, I would venture that the forty-nine cents on this bid is probably going to go up after a year, um, with the Hartford, which is the same company who we just gave the life to. They've got a two-year rate guarantee?
Yes, we needed to see that at their meeting.
So, looking at that, I'd be willing to roll the dice and pay three cents more this year, in exchange for, in exchange for knowing that it's going to be that price for two years, instead of getting the forty-nine now, which is three cents cheaper, but then having it go to seventy-one cents or more after a year. So, what we're really betting on is, you know, the difference is three cents, three and fifty-two is fifty-five. Betting that the first rehab life goes to more than fifty-five cents after a year, and since we already know that we're paying seventy-one, and have been told anecdotally that the current provider's losing money at seventy-one cents, I'd be willing to bet that it will go up past fifty-five cents after a year. So I would suggest going with Hartford, which has the two-year rate guarantee, and none of the other companies that bid provided a two-year rate guarantee or longer. Back for life, we got a three-year rate guarantee.
Do we need to do that tonight, or do we need, uh, do we have time to put that together in formal motion for the next meeting?
I think we could just scratch off the word "life" and put in "disability" on the last resolution we just did, I mean, I don't see it as...
And two-year rate?
And a two-year rate guarantee, I don't see it as being materially different than that resolution.
Okay.
Do you feel comfortable with that? Yes.
Is that all right with you?
Yes.
You don't have a problem paying the higher price now, in exchange for a two-year rate guarantee?
Not by the sounds of it, it's, 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 it looks like it's going to go up big.
And you were there too, Mayor.
After a year.
He said seventy-one cents, and they're losing money, so, and he, he was specifically asked, too, how long is their rate good for, and he said one year.
Right, and at that, at that meeting, it wasn't, we didn't have the information of the two years.
It was all there, we just didn't read it.
And, and Joe, just a correction, uh, it might have been a typo on the resolution, that point two oh... Should read, uh, point one seven, two thousand. It's there twice for the life insurance.
Yes, point one seven for the group term, point zero three for the AD and D, so it's total point two oh.
Total of twenty.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.